Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of January 21st, 2025. If you all would please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ard, would you please follow?
Elmore?
Present.
Morrison?
Present.
Peck?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Harkar?
Present.
Dixon?
Present.
Brown?
Present.
President Potter?
Present.
We now have the approval of the minutes, which includes the December 17th, 2024 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, the January 7th, 2025 Agenda and Regular Meeting Minutes, as well as the January 14th, 2025 Agenda and Special Meeting Minutes.
Mr. President, I'd like to take a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Harkar, for the approval of the minutes. Is there any discussion? Ms. Ard, please follow.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harkar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation by Mayor Bivins, a human trafficking proclamation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good evening, members of council, everyone that's here this evening. Thank you so much for giving us this time for this special presentation regarding human trafficking. Before I read the proclamation, there's individuals that I would like to thank, especially as it relates to this. One is Tara Alston. She's with an organization called Still I Stand.
Yes, Still I Stand.
Still I Stand, as well as Chief Mike Crispin, who is joining us this evening, as well as Councilmember Amy Harkar helped in drafting this proclamation. I did want to give them just a little space, just to kind of give you the context and give you kind of some of the foundation for how this proclamation was drafted, so in no particular order, please.
I like you said no particular order. So, yes, thank you so much, Mayor, for your time on this. Thank you, Tara, for coming in and meeting with us, and Devin as well. I have two members of my team that have been with me for the last 10 years at ETSS, working the survivors of domestic violence and human trafficking. Chief Crispin, I know that this is a topic that is very important to you, and you do a lot of great work for trafficking survivors. We want to take this time to spread awareness about this. Many people still do not know that trafficking takes place, it takes place in our community. Many people think that it happens elsewhere, but the truth is, if we don't acknowledge that it happens right here at home, we're not going to be able to eradicate it. So, using the, you know, force, fraud, and coercion over individuals, whether that is what we consider prostitution as a form of human trafficking, domestic servitude, labor trafficking, or all the forms of trafficking that we serve for survivors.
And so often, many people, like Amy was stating, think that this happens just in another country, but it's really happening in our country and in our state and here in the communities such as Whitehall. And it's by raising this awareness that we can ensure that we are meeting the needs of the people, because oftentimes, human traffickers are looking for people with vulnerabilities that aren't being met in order to traffic them. So if we raise that awareness, then we can meet the needs of the individuals and hopefully help protect them by meeting those needs, if not even preventing this horrible issue.
Well, because I'm a police chief, it can help myself throw out statistics, right, to support what they've just said. In '23, we don't have the '24 numbers yet, but in '23, over 850 phone calls to the Polaris hotline for human trafficking incidents in the state of Ohio, 450-plus of those being victims that have been rescued. Of those 458, you know that in the city of Whitehall, the Whitehall Division of Police had six cases, right here in Whitehall. Most of those come from our traffic stops, and now you understand why we work for those as well. And additionally, if you just saw, a couple months ago in November, our narcotics unit was heavily involved in a case that was very detailed and ended up with 14 counts for trafficking. And that person's probably going to look at being put away for a long time, as they should, and again, that was a direct result of one of our narcotics guys that were involved in. The problem I would say with that, and why I think this is so important, Mayor, I really appreciate you and certainly you folks for sure for what you do, as well as the council for supporting stuff like this, is that of those 14 women that were rescued that day, that were real close here to Whitehall, and about another 17, well, two weeks later, or near 17th Avenue, we took from that case, of those, most of them go right back into it because of the situations, or what you call that, but because of that, at some point in their life, they're going to hit rock bottom. And this awareness stuff is so important for them to know that there's a place to call and someone here available to help them, they're ready for it. So, thank you so much for coming in.
No, thank you, Chief. And just while, in preparation of this proclamation, I was able to hear just a personal hometown hero story from Councilmember Harkar, who was able to identify and potentially save a potential victim of human trafficking. And so, I just wanted to acknowledge that. It's an important proclamation, and I hope that this gave some context and subtext before I read this proclamation openly in council this evening. So, from the office of the mayor, proclamation, "Whereas, human trafficking is a public health crisis and crime that exploits vulnerable individuals undermining the health, dignity, and safety of individuals, families, and communities." And, you all can come closer to me. Whereas, more than two decades after the enactment of the Trafficking Victims Protection Act, human trafficking persists across the globe, impacting an estimated 27.6 million people, including cases within every U.S. state and territory. And whereas, human trafficking does not discriminate and affects individuals of all backgrounds, but certain populations, including those experiencing abuse, violence, poverty, social isolation, discrimination, or unstable living conditions, are disproportionately at risk. And whereas immigrants, undocumented individuals, and other marginalized groups often face heightened vulnerability to trafficking due to barriers in language, legal protections, and access to resources, leaving them more susceptible to exploitation in industries such as agriculture, domestic work, construction, and factories. And whereas traffickers exploit people in person and online, often hiding in plain sight and may use coercion, fraud, or force in their recruitment and abuse. And whereas the city of Whitehall is committed to ensuring that those impacted by human trafficking receive services that are trauma-informed and responsive to their individual needs. And whereas a successful response to human trafficking requires a coordinated, community-wide effort that includes collaboration across sectors, public-private partnerships, survivor engagement, and the promotion of resilience and equity to ensure that prevention, intervention, and support services are effective and meet the needs of all survivors. And whereas every individual, family, community, and organization can help raise awareness, prevent trafficking, and support survivors by learning how to take action at acf.hhs.gov/ endtrafficking. And whereas every resident of Whitehall has a role to play in combating human trafficking by staying informed, supporting survivors, and promoting practices that enhance prevention and response efforts. Now therefore, I, Michael T. Bivins, Mayor of the City of Whitehall, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2025 as National Human Trafficking Prevention Month in the City of Whitehall. I call upon all residents, businesses, and organizations to unite in raising awareness, supporting victims and survivors, and working together to eliminate the scourge of human trafficking in our community and beyond. Signed this day, the 21st of January 2025. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for coming out to see me. Now moving to standing committee reports, Administration and Financial Management, Chairperson Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration and Financial Management met on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have a few pieces of legislation for this evening. We will meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Committee and elder advocacy, Chairperson Harkar.
Yes, thank you, President Potter. We have no drafts or pending legislation this evening. I do want to thank you for your time with the human trafficking proclamation, and thank you to everyone that is here in support of that this evening. We will meet again sometime next, after 6:30 next week.
Thank you. Community Standards and Enforcement, Chairperson Smith.
Hey, President Potter. Community Standards and Enforcement met last week. We have no legislation on the agenda this evening. Our minutes are on file. We will meet again next week.
Very good. Economic Development, Chairperson Dixon.
Thank you, President Potter. Economic Development met last week. Our minutes are on file. We have a couple pieces of legislation up on, being read by Tyler, only in the second reading tonight. Otherwise, we'll meet next week in these chambers after 6:30.
Thank you. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services, Chairperson Brown.
Thank you, President Potter. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last week. Our minutes are on file. We don't have any drafts or pending legislation this evening, and we plan to meet next Tuesday around 6:30.
Very good. Public Safety, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Safety also met last week. We have no drafts or pending legislation, and we will meet again, our minutes are on file, we'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. And Parks and Recreation, Chairperson Peck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Parks and Recreation met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no drafts or pending legislation on the agenda tonight. We will meet again this coming Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you. That brings us to our official reports. First off, Mayor Bivins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council and everyone that's here this evening, just from the mayor's office, would like to officially report that my fledgling Mayor's Youth Advisory Council is up and running. I was able to meet with at least, it started off with 10 youth from middle school to high school. They went back to school and told some of their friends, so they came back, and now it's 14. They have named themselves, they have organized officers, and here soon, I will do a special presentation with respect to them. But so that members of the community are aware, and the parents were also aware, and the students were aware, is they're going to be instrumental in advising the mayor's office as it relates to our policies and how they impact young people. They are particularly focused on school issues, and they'll soon learn the difference between the school district and city administration, but they are excited, they are energetic, and I'm hopeful to match their energy. Incidentally, they have created a whole technological chain of communicating and setting dates, and literally came into my office last week when I had a meeting that was already scheduled, and they said, "No, it's fine, we'll just, we'll take over your office," and they met, and it was just fantastic to see. But to get the young people involved in city government is crucial, and it's happening in real time. Secondarily, I would like to thank publicly, I did it yesterday, but I would like to thank our service department, I would like to thank our Parks and Rec Department, I would also like to specially thank my administrative, or my executive assistant, Deanna Hannaf. We had to make a pivot, a strong pivot from the YMCA because the power was out, and we had our seventh annual Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Award, where we were able to award the top two recipients $1,000 in scholarships. And thank you, Councilmember Elmore, for just championing this along with me for all of these years. It was just a beautiful display of love. So the community knows, this year, the students worked on a book, and they wrote essays from Martin Luther King's last book before he was assassinated in 1968. And it was, it's titled, "Where Do We Go From Here: Community or Chaos?" And the essays were just fantastic. I invite you, if you would like to see some of these essays, I will share them with you, and I will exalt them because the insight of some of these young people as it relates to these issues was just phenomenal. So it was just a fantastic experience. I would also like to publicly thank State Representative Ishmael Mohammed, as well as our State Representative Latina M. Humphries for attending yesterday's event. It was just a fantastic display of unity, hope, and it was probably the reason why the Buckeyes won last night. So, I was just very excited. And then, lastly, I see a lot of members that are here that are just, have signed in, that are going to speak potentially as it relates to the Fairway Cliffs development. Let me just say this publicly, and I've said it to council, I am very interested in hearing all of your comments. They are noted, they are taken into consideration, so that the public knows, the administration has brought this legislation to council and provided our best effort to provide council with the most amount of resources to have as much direct control, access, and opportunity to have input on this development. The development itself is zoned in the City of Whitehall, so whether it comes in this format, or whether it comes in a different format, at least at this moment, this council has all of the information from this administration to give it as much, as many tools as possible to have direct impact, direct oversight, and direct input on how that development will be designed. And then lastly, as I just had a meeting with Heartland Bank last week about the option, and I thank council for agreeing to that option with Heartland Bank, and they're definitely going to expand in the City of Whitehall. Within the Fairway Cliffs development, we also have negotiated the potential of adding new parkland to the City of Whitehall. And so for that, I just wanted to state that publicly, let me say your difficulty, your upset, your problems with it are heard, they're not being ignored, but at least as it stands at this moment, the administration has provided it to council, and however council decides to vote on it, is completely their prerogative. And then lastly, in the horizon, I was able to speak with, talk with, and be dazzled by Michael Wilkos from the United Way, who will be coming to Whitehall sometime in February to give a special presentation as it relates to housing and how it impacts, and our impact and our footprint within central Ohio. And he's just an amazing speaker. If you've never heard him, I invite you to Google him. He is just phenomenal, and I really think that if you decide to attend that seminar and that town hall, whatever way we decide to call it, I think you will be impressed. So look for that coming in February. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. See you training, Nick Jermus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just quickly, I ended last year by letting council know that there was a resignation in the office, one of the prosecutors. Well, I can start this year by saying, new prosecutor started today. Not a lot of training time, kind of trial by fire, luckily has prosecuted cases with us before, so at least have that so we're not drowning is bad. So, first day, I met with them afterwards, overwhelmed, as could be expected, because there's a lot to do downtown, it's organized chaos, but so far, so good. And now that the year's ended, and hopefully stuff's getting in, I'm going to work on some numbers for end-of-year stuff for council, hopefully for the next meeting, but that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Auditor Quinzel is not with us this evening. Brings us to our Director of Public Service, Rollins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple of things that kind of segue into each other. Firstly, it's bitterly cold out, and we all know that, so just, you know, letting everybody know, if you have plumbing on your exterior walls, open up those cabinets, let the heat get into those so that we're not busting any water lines inside of your house, which segues me into all the water breaks that we have throughout the city. We are aware, we know that they're happening. We are unfortunately at the MCF Columbus, but once we find out about a water break, we do report that immediately. And moving forward, every morning, my guys go out and salt those water breaks, so that they are trying to reduce the freezing that is happening from those water breaks. And that leads me into then, tomorrow I have a meeting with the contractor that is doing our waterline project. Hopefully, I will get an updated schedule moving into 2025, seeing where we are, you know, getting made complete, and then moving down Yearling Road. My assumption is that project on Yearling will start in April, but again, I'll have more updated schedule tomorrow. And something that is not related to water breaks, but is very important and super sad for us, our animal control officer, Steve Brown, is retiring officially. So his last day is this Friday. We're having a little come, meet, greet, say goodbye, say your thank yous to Steve on Friday from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. here in City Hall in the council chambers. So, please, public, anybody who wants to stop out and say their farewells to Steve, please do so. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director of Public Service, Greg is not with us this evening. This brings us to Treasurer Alexander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of council, I do not have an official report this evening, just know that the city is solid, and we'll continue paying our bills. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The following official reports were filed in the council offices at our last meeting, and it has one item actually, is the Auditor's financial report for December 2024. Other communications, petitions, and claims, we've got no communications or petitions or claims that have been filed in our office since our last meeting. This brings us to our first poll public, and once again, we've got a sign-in sheet, so if you please be sure to sign that. You have up to three minutes to speak, and please do state your name. And so with that, I open the floor to anybody who'd like to come forward. Please.
So I'm here to talk about--
Please state your name.
Oh, my name is Patricia Bowles, sir. I live at 608 Rosberg. So, I'm here to talk about the Wood Cliff, or I'm sorry, the Wood Cliff, so I'm going to bring the Fairway Cliff. So, I wanted to talk about one thing that I think is more important than anything, and that's the zoning. And my question to you is, what is the zoning there? What exactly allows someone to take a single-family lot and put townhomes? I'm not even sure how many townhomes there are, but that's my question before you guys, because that, I think, is the top of the list before we even get to taxes and all the other things, and what it looks like, and, you know, how it all set up. Like, what allows me to tear my house down and build a, you know, a three-story complex? Where are we ending this? Where is our rules and regulations on housing? How much we're going to do? Because I feel, I know there's a housing shortage. I feel that Whitehall should not take this upon their shoulders to fill the gap of housing. We're a pretty dense population in somewhere like, you know, over in, I can't think of it, but over in, by the, by these smaller houses that we have, which are awesome because they're small houses, they allow first-time homeowners in there. In fact, that's why I'm here, because my grandparents were able to buy a house here, and it was affordable. And so, I think we need to go back to our kind of founding fathers of when they developed Whitehall and what their vision was. And it was affordable housing. It was able to, and it was a diverse thing. I mean, we have, we have Fairway, and they're big lots. In fact, I was looking at acreages on them, and where those, those housings are, eight, nine, nine, four, six, 2.5, eight, nine, 10, 11, 11 acres, all down those roads. And that goes back to the creek. We're not talking about the other houses that, you know, there was, I think, the smallest lot on that, that was like a .3 acres on Fairway. So, I don't understand how we can take a road and just completely change the neighborhood. I mean, let's face it, neighborhoods are about, I live there, and it's about the cohesiveness of the community. Obviously, there's a lot of people, I haven't met one person that's in favor of this. And I know, and these are people that don't even live on Fairway. These are people that just enjoy the road, they enjoy the wildlife, they enjoy the trees. There's so much more there than just houses. But the cohesiveness of the neighborhood, it's a neighborhood, it created a neighborhood.
Ma'am, your three minutes is up.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll sign in in a second. So, hi, Holly Stein. As a resident of the City of Whitehall, I want to actually thank all of you council members, because I do recognize that you have a decision in front of you, and I recently heard that each of you have decided you're going to vote representing all of the City of Whitehall, not just your own board, because this is an issue that affects all of us. What I'm here to do today is ask you to vote no on the pending legislation on Fairway Cliffs and all the tax incentive legislation that is proposed. And you're asking yourself, why? Part of this is the economic, I do not believe this is in the economic best interests of the City of Whitehall. And secondly, it does not meet the legal requirements of the zoning code that apply to our one district, but our zoning code actually calls out special protections of Fairway Boulevard. If you haven't looked at it, please do. The other thing is, we do not need a park, another park. This park is 2.1 miles from the City of Whitehall Park. We're going to be asking for a grant of $700,000 for parkland that is in a floodplain. It is literally worth nothing to this developer, and in fact, the appraised value is about $6,000 a acre. The expense that we're going to incur to monitor and have safety for this park is going to be assigned to all of us as residents of the City of Whitehall. The second point is, this proposed subdivision creates, quote, "zero full-time equivalent employees." This is stated in their own petition, the petition that is handed to you as part of the new community authority, which goes against tax incentive financing purposes. The purposes for having tax incentives is that you make up the difference for the money that this developer's going to get by the fact that they're bringing in additional revenue through doc, through jobs. This is not the case. The number is zero. There are temporary construction jobs, no full-time equivalent jobs. It is in the petition. So I ask you, please consider these facts and vote to not give this developer, it is inappropriate for the neighborhood. The tax abatements and the tax incentives that you're proposing hurt every single member of the community. We are going to take on the burden of those tax incentives given to this developer. And if you don't believe me, read your own Franklin County Tax Incentive Review Council report that took 10 years of looking at tax incentives given by municipalities just like yourself, and they find they actually hurt the economies that they're in. So please consider the facts. Thank you for your consideration, and I also want to say, this is not an emergency measure. This has been tried since October of '23. There is no immediate need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. Would anybody else like to come forward?
Good evening. My name is Kiran Sartoska. I live at 50--
Oh, you don't have to say your address if you don't want, just your name, thank you.
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
So, I'm probably going to repeat a couple things to the other ladies, then I have, I cannot span how this is an emergency. This, they have one project before, it's been more than a year, why is it an emergency now? I have, I can't understand it. Some of you emailed, and I have emailed most of you, a couple weeks ago when I first heard about it, except for Devin, because it was a time I didn't have the email address. So you can email me back. It's my last name, so you should be able to find it in your emails. I don't see this as being an emergency. I don't see the benefit to the city by giving this developer, or any similar developer, a tax credit, because we're going to end up paying for it. And a lot of us are retired, and on sick terms. The park that's being given is because that land is not valuable. You can't build anything there. You can't build anything there. He's just giving it away because he can't do anything with it. And the location of it, in the back of the neighborhood, is going to be security and not good for the whole community, because when it's hidden, there's more shady things going on. And we're gonna talk about that we need more housing and so forth. We already have torn down Hamilton and Broad Street, the streets are in, let's develop that first. And some of the information here is that, that he's gonna develop certain parcels. It doesn't even say what parcels. Two years from now, is he going to be able to buy two doors down and do another townhouse or apartments or houses? Where does it end? Can I tear down my house and build a duplex? Where does it end when we buy in the middle of a neighborhood? It's because we know what's around us. That's what, you know, that's what any Realtor will tell you, and I'm personally no Realtor. And I don't know why, last night, after the first meeting, after that, I did get a letter about this, the previous petition. For this one, other than on Facebook, I haven't heard anything about it. Calling it an emergency to me personally and to people I have talked to, sounds like the city is trying to get a path before the general public knows about it. And that's not fair to the people of Whitehall. Because not all of us have come out here. Some people have kids, they had them all day today, they'll have them all day tomorrow, because there's no school. They can't be here.
Yeah, ma'am. You're free, ma'am, sister. Thank you.
No problem. Have a good-
You as well.
Hi, Amanda Waller. I was the tree hugger that wrote the long-winded letter about the park, selling the parkland to Heartland Bank. And I know I've talked to Councilor Brown and Matt Link about this issue. And I appreciate you taking the time to speak with me and talk about that, and Counselor Dixon as well. I know we talked before the holidays a lot about the parks and the trees and everything, so thank you for that. And to all of you for all the work you do, I'm sure it's not easy. You have to weigh the pros and cons, obviously, of everything. And as far as the Heartland deal with parks, I guess the pros to that, or what you'd be giving up would be the, or were giving up, was the recreational land, the green space, the increase, you have an increase in previous services they built there on the land, the mature trees, the tree canopy, the health effects of that. So that was what we would lose, quote-unquote, for that deal. And then what you would gain would be the economic, you know, incentives of the partnership of one of, you know, Whitehall's most important business partners, right? So again, I could understand that. In the Fairway Cliffs legislation, what we would be losing would be the tax incentives, right? The money there, and there is, as others have said, there is a cost to it, right? So all of the available data that I am aware of, at least for Franklin County and for the state of Ohio, so far shows that there is a cost to these tax incentives, to the district and to the taxpayer of the municipality, right? So it will come at some sort of cost to us. And what we would gain is the two and a half acres of the park, which is nice, but again, it is on the floodplain, so it's protected from development anyways. So that will always stay as green space, and nothing can be built on it or whatever. So really, it would be the passive recreation and the boat launch, which we have one of those upstream a little bit, right? So I don't see it as quite equivalent to what we lost. And I think that there's maybe a lot more to, on the con side of things there, as far as like the cost of the trips and the taxes, so that's all I-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Linda Vines. I've been in Whitehall since I was two years old. This is my third house in Whitehall, I live on Fairway. And my family loves Fairway. My grandmother and grandfather moved here, I go to church here. I graduated here in '81. And my house is on the first term in Fairway. And the safety is just unbelievable. My, my, my trash cans have been hit. My, everything's been hit on the curb. Next-door neighbors, theirs was hit just two months ago. They went up from their house, hit their mailbox, and went across the street and hit the, the fire hydrant. I got up that morning and I go, wow, that fire hydrant is not there anymore. And please do not allow to have 200 or 300 more cars coming down that street. I beg you. I can't, I, I have neighbors, they have three kids next door, three girls. They can't allow their, their, their kids to go out in the front yard. You can't put 200 more cars. Please, do not, the safety, you cannot do it. And I'm not saying anything about the please and the safety, but I mean, the curve, they're dangerous. There is no way that you can put all those cars on Fairway. Please. There, I mean, I, I have a Super Bowl party coming up, February 8th or 9th, whatever it is. My friends and family are gonna come, and they're gonna park on that street. And you need to tell me, you're gonna put more people on that street coming down there with that all, with how many apartments or townhomes you call it? Please, think of the safety. There is no way. We've had dogs hit, we've had dog, cats hit. I've thrown a shovel at someone that was going 80 miles an hour down Fairway. That's how mad I've been. And, and you're not, and that's not even including putting more of these cars on our street. So please, I beg you, don't let this happen. We can't have this much traffic going down Fairway. We just can't. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Ms. Odd, would you please call roll as to whether each member of the council has given a copy of each item of the legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, including any add-on legislation?
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harfbar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Thank you. Under third reading, we have ordinance 121, 2024.
Mr. President, I'd like to table ordinance 2021, 2024.
Until further notice?
Until further notice, yes. We're investigating it, and I think it would be prudent to do a little bit, a deeper dive into some of the things that the city of Worthington put together for their dear thinning, and also to pull together some more community input and have a committee to look further into this.
Ms. Elmore, thank you. So Ms. Elmore has made a motion to table ordinance 121, 2024.
I'll second.
Thank you, and has been seconded by Mr. Brown. Any discussion? Ms. Odd, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harfbar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance 121, 2024 has been tabled. Under second reading, we have a special presentation under, for ordinance 7, 2025. Mr. Long, if you'd like to come forward.
So we have President Brown, the developer, the presentation that wanted to enter a reading. Hello, everyone. My name is Evelyn Rivera. I work for Corner of the Real Estate Group. We are in tops two, mid of the east side of Yerling Road, sorry, west and east gets confusing in my head sometimes. I know that we came in front of this council about two, three years ago to talk about the east side, which we finally have permits for, and our hope is to break down in April with 20 townhomes right on the existing property of Yerling real apartments right in front. What we're considering on the other side is, it was talked about four or five stories, all this stuff, and we kind of simplified it to just kind of keep the feel of what we're building on one side of the street to the other, which are gonna be 24 bedroom townhomes. And we want to redevelop the office area right there in the heart of it into office retail, but not build something new, expand on it, because of building codes and everything, to kind of stay with what's already compliant in the codes. So we want to add retail in the front, which is hopefully food service, some type of other retail store, about only about 2,500 square feet, and that's kind of where we're at.
So would you talk about this, the retail space? That would be new building, or?
In addition to the office building that's currently there, instead of demoing what's there, which is brick, it's from my, we've always been told Whitehall wants that brick look, which is what we're doing on the other, opposite side. We're gonna add to it with incorporating that facade and bringing it to the curb, which the townhomes are all designed on the east side, they're gonna go right to the curb, and so are the ones that are designing on the west side, which are the same exact four-bedroom style townhomes.
So would you, so you'd be making that building larger?
Larger, towards the street.
Okay, just towards the street? So it would be going north-south, it'd just be going west?
Just towards the street. On then on either side where the old jumbos is, we'll have eight four-bedroom townhomes. And then where the shrimp hut is, we're gonna have eight more that way.
Okay. And then what type, so would the, coming forward with the facade of the brick, that wall though, be go away, right? Because then you'd be moving forward.
We'll be reincorporating, because it won't be the same width as actually. We met with the architects today, so the architecture group we use for our mobile family is one, and then anything to do with commercial office and stuff is another one, because they're kind of experts on that one.
Right.
So we met with them today for the first time, so you're still going to see the old building back, it's just gonna come up to the front?
Wait, I don't follow you. So if you, if you're not gonna be putting a new front on that?
We are, so we're gonna put, you're still gonna incorporate the, behind it, because you don't, you don't want just a big rectangle, we want some design elements to it, so you're still gonna see the brick and the building behind it, and we're gonna dress it up. And that's our hope. If really, if it doesn't work, can we go back to the drawing board? Of course we can.
So would you be, I understand you just met with them, but you'd be bringing some renderings forward?
Yes, we will.
Would you think we might have?
When that comes, our hope is in the next 90 days, they can come up with some ideas that we can bring forward.
So before we'd actually, before this council would actually act on the legislation?
Yes.
We were not having renderings to look at?
Unfortunately, no, the, the plans have been changed so many times. We've been working on this for two years, that things have been just moved around. Originally, it was supposed to be a building starting at the jumbo lot and moving northbound, and then the gas easement that was put in last year kind of scrapped all of our work for that, because I can't build a building over it now if something hasn't easemented. So then we had to go back to the drawing boards on that. That's why we want to just reincorporate the building that's there and just kind of do an addition to it. I do have kind of like a light mock-up of what we're talking about. It's nothing fancy, but, so this is what we're planning on doing right here. Can I pass this around?
Please.
So we have the 20 units.
Thank you.
Want to go that way? I incorporate any office building in the middle, which is right here. We would just do a retail addition as I have a light mock-up over here.
Can I take a photograph of this, so I can share it and I can still look at it? Thank you.
I'll start on the other side.
And what's that rendering you have right?
So this is just the current office building here, here would be Yerling Road. Kind of what we're talking about, just the front out to the front. Again, this is very quickly done after we met with our architect today.
So would this, so would this addition be one story out front? I mean, because, so how will we still be able to see the building, I guess is my question.
On, on either side and from the sides.
From the sides, yes, as far as the front facade?
From the front facade, so there's gonna be a little sliver left. And again, this is a working concept. So it's actually gonna be one story, because the building back there is a two-story but partially sub-
Correct, it's a split level.
This would be on, yes, this would be on slab, which actually would then let you use the interior of the building to ramp up, so it's actually gonna be more to be kept accessible from the main road, because right now there's a step, so you have to walk around the building to get in, from the front, or from the side to the front.
And how many townhomes did you say?
20.
20 townhomes, how many bedrooms?
Four bedrooms each.
Last week, we were told by Mr. Long, and thank you for coming in, Mr. Rivera. We were told by Mr. Long that on the corner of Rickenbacker and Yerling, where the jumbo sub shop was, was that there would be retail or mixed-use space, and that then the rest, I believe, would be townhomes. But that doesn't sound like what we heard.
That was the original plan, but again, when we started planning this, and I know it was, we started this four years ago. Originally, we're talking about doing five stories and a three-story, and then really parking became an issue. And then once that easement came in, I couldn't extend the building over the easement. So then we revisited the idea of then just using the jumbos on, keeping everything its own separate parcels, so it would be easier to develop, easier to construct, and everything would be its own separate project. So the commercial spot that's on that road, which is the office building, that's the one we want to redevelop and do the addition. If for some reason it's not working, can we go back to the drawing board and come up with something else to do the commercial retail there? We can.
So as far as the existing office building, would that, would then be office space for lease?
Office space for lease.
And where would this, because there was talk about a restaurant or cafe or something?
That would be up front, where we would like to design the area, the front area to be 2,000 roughly square feet of retail office that's usable, or retail mixed-use that's usable. We're hoping some type of coffee shop we can attract, and then some other type of storefrontage or something that would work on the community side.
And where is that at?
Right in front of the office building.
Right from the 538.
Yes.
Okay, so that's office, and then you would have retail there?
Correct.
But not down on the corner?
Not down on the corner.
So this would be, oh, sorry, this apparently can't see back. This is clear. Is it 57 from the book that you gave us is no longer, this is the new rendering?
Yeah, this was a new change that just kind of occurred, moving the office into research in different locations.
And the townhomes on the east side of Yerling will be used prepared by private designer?
Yeah. Like this?
On the, that's on the west side.
On the west side.
On the east side, they're different.
We're gonna do the same exact, if they're the same exact floor plan, same everything.
So then what are these?
Those are... So these are the, these, but these are the ones that are gonna be sitting behind these, that will never face the Yerling Apartments. So they're gonna be double-layered between the Yerling real apartment parking lot and where Yerling Road is, there's gonna be two layers of townhomes on that side. And then we're gonna grab that same floor plan, put them on this side of the street, which is what we're talking about, and then we're gonna use the same renderings, the same style of the brick, the stonework, so everything looks uniform on both sides of the street once this is all done.
Then this will also be in front where the jumbo's is now? And then how much further north will that go?
Toward, so it's jumbos, the office building.
No, no, I'm just going the other way.
The other.
North. Where the houses are.
For that, so there's, if I got my bearings straight, I have jumbos on the corner.
No, oh, yeah, jumbos on the corner, office building, then you've got the fish-
The shrimp hut.
Shrimp hut, and then I'm saying-
There's two houses that also can incorporate, and then it stops there.
Okay.
If I may jump in, while I respect the architectural and construction process, I will not speak for everybody, but for me, you can try to verbally walk me through this all day long. And while I understand things ebb and flow and change, this is too much change for me to try to anticipate and try to verbally and visually understand what you're saying to vote on something without actually seeing the full picture. And so while I come from a background of construction and architecture, I can get to where you're saying. I don't think the community or a lot of these members up here of what we're seeing right now is like, do you mean this or that or that? Why is it that we can't see an updated floor plan or get more, a more precise understanding of what's happening here? Why did we come for this without having stuff ready?
From our standpoint, I know, I was notified about this meeting last week, so, and it was like we were just scrambling to prepare- From our standpoint, I know, I was notified about this meeting last week, so, and it was like we were just scrambling to prepare something, um, so that's where our standpoint, um, the moving things around, we started this in late fall, and it just has taken time for architects to come up with plans and draw everything up, and again, with the commercial aspect, we didn't even engage on the new aspect, because when we decided to scratch that pedestal building because of the fact that parking wasn't going to be sufficient, and I didn't want the headache of trying to figure out more and more parking, so that's why we decided to downsize it and then shifting the buildings around. Everything, we kind of scrapped it last September, October, by the time we started talking about moving things around, then it was November, December, and we're in January now.
I guess what Councilperson Smith is getting appointed is would have not been better to have all your ducks in a row before you even presented this legislation to us to be considered with, I don't know, I've been so confused with the information and the paperwork coming out, we got, it's impossible to comprehend all the changes, because you sit down and read one document that's several hundred, or over a hundred pages long, and then a few days later, you get another revision on that document, and then a revision on that document.
It's, it's a lot.
And with, well, I don't think you do understand, because it's unfair to this committee up here to be expected to comprehend all this information and the timeframe in which we had. It's, it's just, you need to go back, in my opinion, get it together, and then bring it to us without fourteen revisions. I'm just getting frustrated.
How, how soon can you have the new renderings to us that incorporate everything that you, you spoke about this evening? Where the buildings are going to be positioned, and how far back they're going to go, what it'll look like in the front, where the other sides look like, how soon can you have them?
The multifamily aspect, I should, I, I'm supposed to have it by the end of the month, it's the commercial aspect, the renovation and the addition part. I want to stick with the ninety-day timeline, I don't, I'm sure I can get it sooner, but I don't want to miss that, considering, I think everyone's a little frustrated, I don't want to miss a deadline or anything, so.
I, I think that the heartburn is voting on something not knowing what's in there, and, and just unfairness to everybody.
Yep.
Um, because, you know, we, we vote on it, then it's, but it's not even finalized, so we have to vote on, you know, vote on a final project.
Okay.
And Mr. President, just may I add, um, just with respect to this legislation in particular, so that uh, council as well as members of the public are aware, uh, the ordinance is actually requesting uh, to repeal a previous ordinance that was already approved by this council, so, I mean, ultimately, um, the applicant, um, has an approved, uh, legislation, an approved ordinance uh, for the plan that is also in your packet, which was the original design and offering, and so ultimately, um, if this legislation is ultimately, you know, rejected for, for lack of the information being there, then it just reverts back to the original ordinance, which is ordinance zero-four-three, uh, twenty-twenty-two, when it was originally approved by, by this council. So I'm just, I'm just making that aware, so that it's not lost on council as well as members of the public. This applicant did receive, um, approval by this council as it relates to this development in a previous, in a previous ordinance.
I will say, I'm sorry.
A couple, at least a couple of the members of this council was not on council at that time.
I understand, but it's still an ordinance that's law by, in the city of Whitehall, so this applicant actually has legislation approved by the city of Whitehall, not this council, so I will clarify it, but the city of Whitehall has given this applicant authority to do the development from the previous legislation.
Then that's one they could act on if they don't have sufficient information for this council.
That's fine.
Which, well, that passed, that was before the easement, which made us re-plan everything, because the building was supposed to be over, that gas line easement that came about, so that's why this all kind of got shuffled around.
Uh, just for clarification, I will say that, uh, this, uh, legislation that we're looking at, it not only repeals, uh, the previous legislation and fairly keeps uh, what it was, but it also adds the commercial, I believe, CRA to it, if I'm wrong about that, Mr. Long?
That, that's correct.
That's correct, so, so if, uh, if this council voted no on it, while indeed it would continue to keep the previous legislation, it would not, uh, grant the additional, uh, commercial CRA, just for clarification.
That is true.
So to be clear too for everybody, so if this was voted down, then would you all be able to move forward at all? Now that there's an easement in place, and obviously it messes with the original design, how would you go?
To, not with the, not with the original plan.
So you wouldn't be able to move forward?
No, we would have to modify and then just work on positioning the properties along the property lines, which is what, we basically tried to just simplify it after the easement came about, and the fact that once we started building, or started designing, we realized parking was not going to be sufficient. Like, if you had three stories with a bunch of one- and two-bedroom apartments on the second and third floor, and retail on the first floor, I, there was no, there was just not enough parking.
Sure.
Um, and that's something we didn't want to run into a problem with. So that's why we simple, we tried to simplify it and just go with the townhomes, which are already being built on the other side, and then repurposing that office building, but instead of demoing, and building something new, and then parking being an issue, just extending it. So that's where this all came about, and this all started taking shape in fall and winter of twenty-twenty-four, so, in the last four, three to four months off.
Any other questions?
Not this time, I have time to review this.
Thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
So, uh, ordinance seven, twenty-twenty-five, uh, again, title only, repealing ordinance forty-three, twenty-twenty-two, approving three reinvestment area, real property tax exemption, applications for Yearling Rick and Barker Development Group, LLC, Whitehall Community Improvement Corporation, Yearling Green One, LLC, or their respective designees, authorizing the execution of the related community reinvestment area agreement, authorizing the execution of the development agreement, and declaring an emergency. Next, we have ordinance eight, twenty-twenty-two, which we read by title only, um, determining that the petition for the creation of the Fairway Cliffs Community Authority complies with the requirements of RC three-four-nine-point-oh-three, and fixing a time and place for a hearing on the establishment of the Whitehall Community Authority and declaring an emergency. Next, we have ordinance nine, twenty-twenty-five, there will be a public hearing on the eighteenth, organizing the Fairway Cliffs Community Authority, establishing the boundaries of the authority, establishing the method for the selection of the Board of Trustees of the authority, appointing members of the Board of Trustees of the authority, and fixing the surety bond amount for the members of the Board of Trustees and declaring an emergency. Next, we have ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five, which you read by title only, uh, which is approving community reinvestment area, real property tax exemption, application for Fairway Cliffs, LLC, or its designees, authorizing the mayor to execute an infrastructure agreement and related documents to the project, and declaring an emergency.
This, you, you were reading ten there?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend ten, twenty-twenty-five, uh, where thirty-six, the, the, the number thirty-six of new townhomes was, uh, in there, and we, it is struck out, and we are now, uh, putting in fifty.
A second. There's been a motion by Mr. Dixon, second by Mr. Brown, to amend ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five as submitted, any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yeah.
Harcar?
Yeah.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Uh, ordinance ten, twenty-twenty-five has been amended as submitted. Ordinance eleven, twenty-twenty-five, be read by title only, creating the Fairway Boulevard Tax Income Financing Incentive District, declaring improvements to the parcels within the incentive district to be a public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, establishing a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of those service payments, and specifying that public infrastructure improvements that benefit or serve parcels in the incentive district and declaring an emergency. Uh, brings us to first reading, which we have a couple items listed, this first one will be title only. Ordinance twelve, twenty-twenty-five, authorizing approving a fund transfer in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the General Fund one-oh-one to Community Development Trust Fund five-fifty, authorizing and approving a supplement appropriation of one hundred thousand and from the Community Development Trust Fund five-fifty to the home reinvestment expense account five-fifty-point-zero-zero-zero-point-fifty-three-thousand. That now brings us to ordinance thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, making and approving a supplement appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars from unappropriate monies in the Recreation Trust Fund eight-sixty to the Recreation Trust Fund expense account eight-sixty-point-zero-zero-zero-point-fifty-thousand, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Heck, to introduce ordinance thirteen, twenty-twenty-five, after the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion?
Um, I, I was going to say, I got clarification, um, the twenty-five thousand, um, is actually from Discover, they donated Parks and Rec to do events throughout the year, so they're wanting to move that person to start planning for the events.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Ms. Ald, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move for adoption.
Second.
Uh, motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Ms. Heck, for adoption, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call roll.
Elmore? Yes. Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Ordinance thirteen, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. Resolution four, twenty-twenty-five, resolving to approve then-announced certificates and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce resolution four, twenty-twenty-five, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
There's been a motion by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, to introduce resolution four, twenty-twenty-five, after the suspension of all rules, is there any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, move for adoption.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Ms. Elmore, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? Ms. Ald, please call roll.
Elmore?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harcar?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Resolution four, twenty-twenty-five has been adopted. This does bring us to our second poll public this evening, again, I'd invite anybody to come forward. Uh, you have three minutes, and this will be on a different subject than what was already.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
All right, while I sign, um, I'd like to use my second poll public tonight to voice my support of the home reinvestment expense, I'm just going to call it grant project, to help homeowners improve their homes and their properties. This type of shared community reinvestment is exactly what is needed for Whitehall. I want to thank Casey and your team for putting this together. In support of this, I'm going to do more than just say I support it though. Tonight, I'm announcing that I'm going to help and provide technical support for any member of Whitehall in any ward with help that you need to complete the application process. I know applying for assistance can sometimes be confusing, and you may need some help along the way. I'm announcing, once this program is up and running, and I'll work with Casey, I will set up some dates and times that are convenient for the people to come sit down with me, ask questions, get the technical help that you need to apply, and get this process completed. I want every dime of this project to be used in Whitehall for good change. If you're interested in my help, please reach out to me at my email address of steinforwhitehall@gmail.com. Dot com, S-T-E-I-N-for-whitehall@gmail.com. Again, let's go Whitehall, and let's make some good change using this development program, appreciate it.
Mr. Stein, quick question, we don't normally have conversations back and forth, am I going to?
I just said, thank you.
No, 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 that's fine, I'm, I'm just, your email, is it the number four, F-O-R, F-O-U-R?
F-O-R.
F-O-R, thank you, that's all I'm going to get a clarification on.
I will help you with technical assistance, because it is a confusing process to apply.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to come forward? Louis, did you sign in? Sir, sir, did you sign in?
Yes, great first one.
Okay, thank you, and your name?
Um, you know.
Your, your name, sir?
Bill Kramer.
Thank you.
Listening to all of us tonight again, and I'm hearing that more townhomes are wanting to be built, if I understand correctly, down here on Yonah Road. The, the street that I live on was redone when Rosemore Jr. Hyatt was redone, and they did a fantastic job on this, all the schools, and now we're bringing up school problems again. I've talked to a couple people, all these additional places coming in, uh, additional children, where are we going to put them in school? The schools are outgrown now, so I don't understand, so, you know, what's going to happen there? And also, when we ask questions, are they ever answered? I've, I'm, I've not been to many of these meetings, but I hear a lot of complex questions, like, why are the emergency and all this, does that stuff ever get answered? So, I'll have a second, thank you. Oh, one other thing, streets look very good up there.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Waller, I just want to speak to a different topic related to the Fairway Cliffs development, if I go to the legislation. Um, it, it seems like everyone, more or less like the administration, the council, um, president, were all in agreement last week that the, um, the, the development would happen regardless of whether or not the legislation went through, that the developer was going to do a development of some sort without, um, whether or not we pass the legislation. So, if that's the case, does that not, um, invalidate the spirit or the purpose or the intent of the tax incentives that we're offering, right? Because they should be, in theory, I thought, like a butt four, right? Like, this would not happen for the, you know, for the city if, unless we give these incentives. So if it's, if everyone's in agreement that the developer will develop this land, and we'll have some sort of, um, development on there, and of course, the zoning code will dictate what can be built there, so it still has to be, you know, single or stir development homes, so I don't think it would change that much ultimately, um, whether or not we pass it, and I just think that there's not a lot of justification for the, um, for the tax incentive legislation, right? Um, I think that, you know, that money maybe be better spent on, and I have other areas of redevelopment, right, where, um, it is more economically needed, I guess, and not Fairway, which is already an economically, um, higher area, right? I think that the, you know, yeah, that the developer, the developer himself would be wanted there, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, community date board.
Parks and Rec is still taking, uh, oh, they just started taking applications for summer camp, um, which is very exciting, right now. I haven't heard, sorry, I said it. And then still taking applications, or not applications, registrations rather, for, uh, T-ball, baseball, softball, uh, soccer, and then boxing. So, and there's no school tomorrow, I don't know.
Uh, there was some confusion about trash day that's still happening tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, that's all I have, not really related to date board, but it just popped into my head, so.
Thanks, everybody, okay, then we'll move on to poll council, Ms. Elmore.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to thank all of our viewers, uh, those that are in the chambers today. Um, also, um, your concerns, um, have been acknowledged, and I am, I'm well aware, I mean, kind of basing the pros and cons, um, recognizing that we do have a housing crisis, single-family homes are needed, um, where do we put them, we are landlocked, um, and we, we are going to do our due, due diligence in looking at all of what we need to look at before we do any, anything or vote on anything. Um, I want to thank my, um, co-chair, uh, Mayor Michael Bivins, um, working with me with the seventh annual Martin Luther King, um, breakfast scholarship luncheon, and I would, um, really, really like for folks to, to look at those, um, essays. The kids that we are raising or bringing up in Whitehall schools, um, very knowledgeable, they have a vision, they want to get involved, they're purposeful, and, um, just information that they gleaned out of the book, Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos of Community, uh, was very astounding, so, um, I would encourage them to do their best, and hopefully you guys will look. So, I would encourage them to do their best, and hopefully you guys will look at their essays. Thank you for the proclamation regarding human trafficking. It is a, it is a real issue, not just in Whitehall, but in Ohio, not just in Ohio, in the United States and abroad. So it is something that we need to take a look at, not only take a look at, get involved in, and, and know what issues are prevalent and how we can help. That is all that I have. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Elmore, thank you. Mr. Morrison?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor, thank you for the proclamation, and I know that everybody involved in it. I wanna thank everybody who participated here this evening, watching this evening, and watching at home, and stay warm. I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Heck?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for everybody that's watching. Thank you, everybody that came out and spoke. I know it's not always easy, I do appreciate it. Thank you for the proclamation. It was definitely some interesting facts from our, our chief, sorry, I have a moment. And also, I would love to see those essays. I was very sad that I was not able to make it on Monday, and I think it's just a phenomenal breakfast. I love that we do it every year and continue to support you. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you to those that were here this evening and spoke. I know it can definitely be intimidating, so I appreciate that. Thank you to those who will be watching later this evening or tomorrow at the replay. Thank you for the proclamation. I think that is something that can feel very, "Oh, well, that's never gonna happen to me," but it's happening all the time. So making, continuing to make people aware of that is really important. I think that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Harcar?
Yes, thank you, everyone. Thank you to everyone that is here and everyone that spoke. I really do appreciate hearing from people. I don't think any of us take these decisions lightly, so your feedback is very much appreciated. Thank you for the human trafficking proclamation. Tara, thank you for coming in and Chuck for more support, being here, so I do appreciate that, and members of my staff coming in as well. I will also say the Martin Luther King Day celebration was fantastic. I'm really thankful that I was able to attend that, thankful that Parks and Rec were able to get it all together, get it moved here. The, the youth, the snippets that I got to hear, that you read, I was very impressed with, from, from the youth, and I would love to read their essays. I just really impressed with the kids that were here and all the thought and care that they put into it, and to their families that were here with them, supporting them, and just, you know, being there for them. I wanna thank Steve Brown, unfortunately not able to make his going away celebration due to a work commitment, but he has been phenomenal, and, you know, I'm thankful the new Steve will be starting here soon, and I'm sure that I will get a chance to meet him. So that's all I have for this evening, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dixon?
Thank you, President Potter. Thank you, everyone, for braviness, nasty cold to come in here. That's civic duty writ large, I guess. And thank you for all those that watched from home. A couple things. Thank you to the mayor for his proclamation on human trafficking. Of the myriad of topics that I focus on or have paid attention to in life, that is one that I have not. I, I don't know if I feel badly for that or not. I do pay attention to a lot of topics, but I know that it is certainly worthy of proclamation and attention. So thank you for that, Mayor Bivens. The essays, as a writer and a reader, I would love to read them, so I don't know how we can make that happen, whether it's scanning and emailing or whatever, but I would definitely like to see those and read them. I would like to thank Tara Alston, is it Alston, for coming in and helping with the proclamation presentation. Godspeed to Steve Brown. As an animal control guy, code enforcement guy, I don't think that we could ask for anyone better, because not only was he a quote-unquote animal control officer, but he also cared about animals, and he had a real caring part of himself that went into that job, so I wish him well on his new life. Mr. Rivera, thank you for coming in and sharing information. Those that did poll public, Patricia Balser, Ms. Stein, as always, thank you for the excellent information. Carolyn Seduska, okay, so I knew I would mangle that, and Amanda Waller, it's nice to see you finally. I appreciated your thorough and very intelligent letter. Linda Clydes, I believe it was, and of course, as always, the inimitable Mr. Bill, Buckeye Bill Kramer. A couple things about that. Ms. Waller, your point in your second poll public was well taken, and, and I appreciate that. I'm not gonna comment on it right now, but that's, that's, I don't have the words for it, but anyway, thank you for that. Bill, Buckeye Bill, you know, I've tried over the years as much as possible, because it was also a point of frustration for me as a citizen when I came in here and did the poll public and so forth, that sometimes I didn't get answers and so forth, so I think it's important, I've always tried to, as much as possible, explain things, and I think your Whitehall government has made leaps and bounds in that area in trying to communicate more thoroughly with the public, and I've mentioned it here on the dais, and appreciate those efforts too, but of course, you know, if there's room for improvement, we can always do that. So I appreciate that, the sentiment. I would finally like to say that there are, there are important things going on in this city right now. I have not seen this much public participation since I started coming to these proceedings fifteen years or so ago. It has risen, and, you know, people come in, they have things that they're concerned with, they come in to praise people, they come in to criticize or add information, whatever it is. I think it's very important, I think what's going on is very admirable among the community, here on this dais, doing our part as government officials, and you folks out there as citizens doing your civic duty in speaking up, in coming in and letting us know what's going on and, and how you feel about that, and hopefully the two work together to create this situation, this community situation, which is as it should be here in America. And so, I note it, and I appreciate it, and I thank you all again for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, President Potter. I'd like to thank everyone who came in this evening. Thank you to everyone who would be watching. I'd like to first start by saying thank you to Councilperson Elmore and the mayor for putting on an incredible Seventh Annual Martin Luther King Junior Scholarship Breakfast Event. I mean, it's incredible to see the investment that goes into our youth and allows them to continue to pursue their education and their hopes and dreams and turning them into young leaders, so thank you for the, the great work that you all do. Thank you, Mayor, for the work that you're doing with the Youth Advisory Council, again, being able to help youth at an early age, get them civically engaged, as well as, again, helping them become the young leaders of the future is, is critical, so thank you for that work. Thank you for the proclamation. Thank you to Councilperson Harcar, as well as Tara Alston, proud, proud son moment, for sure, for all the work that you all do in the fight against anti-human trafficking. Thank you to the chief as well for all the work that you do. I would just like to say again, a big thank you to Casey, as always, for all the incredible work that you and your team do, as well as Parks and Rec, and thank you for all being able to pivot, you know, on Monday as well. So, thank you to Ms. Stein specifically for offering the, the home improvement support and assistance. I think that that is admirable. Like you said, it is very daunting sometimes to go through different applications and try to find assistance, especially to the people who need it most, so being able to offer that is, is admirable, so thank you for that. I'd like to say a few words, I will try to keep it very short for you all. So yesterday, we celebrated the life and legacy of the late, great Dr. Martin Luther King Junior, and while much of his work focused on lifting his people through unimaginable turmoil, the ultimate dream of his was bigger, which was to unite people of all backgrounds and walks of life. And as I heard the powerful Ismail Muhammad say yesterday, "Dr. King's vision wasn't just about justice for some, it was about connection for all." And to truly connect as people, we have to do more than just exist alongside one another. We must learn to see others deeply and allow ourselves to be deeply seen. This reminds me of a greeting that I learned from Ken Braswell that originates from the Zulu people, "Sawabona," which means "I see you," and the response, "Seekona," translates to "Because you see me, I am here." And these words remind me to always try to see the humanity in people, even when sometimes we struggle to show it. Being involved here on city council allows you to see the beautiful and sometimes not-so-pretty sides of people, but I try to remember that we all have experienced life in a way that is unique, and ultimately, we all want the same thing, which is to be loved, appreciated, and to be seen deeply by others. I've taken on the job to connect with everyone who has shown an ounce of interest in talking and some who have not, no matter their views or opinions, or whether we agree or disagree on different issues. I truly believe that part of my mission on earth is to bridge the gap and to help bring people together. I have faced my own criticisms since being appointed, some of it I chalk up to genuine concern for the community, and some, to me, just comes off as bitterness at times, and although I do not blame people for being skeptical, I just ask that people afford me the opportunity to allow my actions to speak for themselves and to show you how seriously I take my role. A couple of people have asked about my credentials and why I'm qualified to be up here, and to be honest with you, I haven't flaunted my resume, number one, because I don't like the way that it comes off, but number two, I believe that more important than anything that I could put on paper, I value my ability to connect with people and to think critically about the short and long term. So, for those of you who may be wondering, I did receive an education from Columbus State Community College, as well as the Ohio State University, Go Bucks. I did study real estate and urban analysis, as well as city and regional planning. I also have work experience with Planning Next, who is a nationally recognized urban planning company, where I gained experience in the capital strategic and comprehensive plans, with Coda, where I learned to better understand our transportation system and how LinkUS is going to impact our region, and most recently Crawford Hoing, who developed Bridge Park up in Dublin, where I saw firsthand how development can transform an area. Again, more important than all of this, I value my ability to connect with people and to make sure that we, that they all know that they are heard and understood. And I'm not saying any of this to receive kudos, I don't want a cookie, but I do want for my community to understand that everything that I do is for them, and I want to be the change that I wanna see in the world, and that's what I do when I do. I share these experiences to help you understand a small part of my story and to learn about who I am. My hope is that by sharing, I can inspire us all to see each other better, because the more we understand one another, the closer we get to a community built on empathy, collaboration, and love, and the type of connection that Dr. King dreamt of, that can transform not just our city, but the world. What I love about this job is the collaboration that comes forth, and like Mr. Dixon just said, the, the civic engagement that we've seen, especially recently, is, no matter how it may look, it is, it may be clunky at times, but it's what is important for our community to move forward together as we tackle the challenges that we're gonna face. And I think that when it's done correctly, it fosters a sense of community that allows us to work together. And I know that we're gonna face many challenges moving forward, and so my hope is that we continue to do it in a cohesive way. So, with that, people have asked me, because I guess you're supposed to announce this type of thing officially and publicly, but I am excited to announce that I'll be running to retain the Ward Four city council seat. I look forward to continuing this work and leading with my values. Thank you to Scott. Building stronger connections with people, focusing on sustainable development and strategic planning, supporting the mayor and his efforts to forge pathways of progress for our youth and our young adults, and asking thoughtful, creative questions to find solutions to the challenges we face as a community. So thank you all for allowing me to honor serving you, I see you, and I hope that we continue to work, I hope to continue to work alongside you to make Whitehall the best it can be. And I'm done.
Thank you. That was a mouthful, but very nice. I too would like to thank the mayor for the proclamation and Ms. Harcar for your work, and I think that was terrific and well done and very much needed to get the public awareness out there. Can't address things unless you know about them, so that was great. Mayor, also, I've been very interested in the essays, I was gonna ask, is that something you can get to copy to all members of the council?
Sure.
Because I think you've definitely got us excited, and I know that I am as well, but I would like to read those. Your thing, that I even found out till the meeting, was underway, we're not being video recorded, we're not streaming live. We did the earlier meeting, but something went amiss, and so I apologize for the technical difficulty on that, but it will be posted shortly after this meeting, so it will certainly be available to everybody, but I'd like to make you aware of that. Mr. Dixon, I'd like to thank everybody coming out in this cold, frigid weather. Be warm, be safe, and having nothing else from this council, I will pause adjourned at eight twenty-six.